The regular meeting of the Aurora City Council from Monday, July twenty eighth.
Music called ended.
The regular meeting of the Aurora City Council for Monday, July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five is called Water. Would the clerk please read the roll?
Mayor Kaufman?
Here.
Councilmember Bergen?
Here.
Councilmember Coombs?
Present.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hancock?
Here.
Councilmember Jurenski?
Here.
Councilmember Casson? Councilmember Lawson?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Mario?
Day after.
Mayor Protem Sundberg?
Here.
There's a call in.
Please join me in an invocation. Oh, Lord, our God and our Father, we come to you and we ask that you look upon this particular gathering tonight to keep us safe and guide us in our decisions. Bless our city with honorable citizens, industry, sound education, and good government. We're not our community together, even though we come from different backgrounds. We pray that there be justice and peace in our city. Give the city council citizens the wisdom, direction, and sensitivity to the business and proceedings before us tonight. Hear us therefore, as we commit this meeting to the help of our community. Amen. Please join me in pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice.
Let's see, land acknowledgement. City of Aurora acknowledges that we gather on the territories and ancestral homelands of the Cheyenne, Arapaho, and Lakota peoples, past and present. We also recognize the forty-eight contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up the state of Colorado. Indigenous peoples have remained committed to the stewardship of this land over many centuries. As these words of acknowledgement are spoken and heard, the ties that these nations have to their traditional homelands and to their vital place in the ecosystem are renewed and reaffirmed, and we are called to be better stewards of the land we inhabit as we continue to work to meet the needs of our entire community. Our executive session update during the executive session, we discussed litigation issues and real property issues. Approval of the minutes motion is in order for the approval of the minutes of July fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Mayor, move to approve the minutes.
It's been moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by.
Hancock.
Seconded by councilmember Hancock to approve the minutes of July fourteen, twenty twenty five discussion. I see no discussion, call for the question on the approval of the minutes from July fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Mayor Kaufman?
Mayor votes yes.
Katie, I'm a yes. My eScribe is not working right now.
Councilmember Casson? Thank you. The motion passes unanimously to approve the July fourteenth, twenty twenty five city council meeting minutes.
Okay, announcer for the public call in line.
The public is invited to comment in support of or to oppose a specific agenda item during the regular council meeting. If you would like to speak and have not already spoken to an operator, please press star three. For those watching on Aurora TV, call eight five five six nine five three four seven five and press star three when connected. You will hear a prompt confirming you're in line to speak to an operator and then be able to continue listening to the meeting. When the operator comes on the line, please be ready to give them your name, the agenda item you wish to speak on, and provide the name of the city in which you reside. Keep in mind, you must press star three before the city clerk reads the title of the item you wish to speak on. If you plan to speak on more than one agenda item, you will need to press star three each time to be placed back in the queue. Also, please note that harassing or abusive treatment of our operators will not be tolerated and will result in the caller being disconnected. Finally, as a reminder, council does not allow comments about non-agenda matters during the regular council meeting. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes.
Buenas tardes, se les invita al público para que para dar comentario, para hablar con el operador, por favor, presione estrella tres. Para aquellos que nos ven en Aurora TV, llame al ocho cinco cinco seis nueve cinco tres cuatro siete cinco y al conectarse presione la tecla asterisco y el número tres. Escuchará una grabación confirmando que está en la línea para hablar con un operador y continuará escuchando la reunión. Una vez que el operador se conecta a la llamada, esté listo para dar su nombre, el tema de la agenda del cual desea comentar y la ciudad donde reside. Tome en cuenta que debe presionar asterisco tres de que el secretario municipal lea el título del tema en el cual desea comentar. Así también, por favor, tome en cuenta que cualquier trato abusivo o de acoso hacia nuestros operadores resultará en la desconexión de la llamada. Finalmente, se le recuerda que durante la reunión regular, el consejo no permitirá comentarios sobre temas no incluidos en la agenda. Para aquellos en espera para dar comentario, se los concede máximo tres minutos. Gracias.
And I would ask any of our callers to, all of our callers to follow the decorum rules by adhering to the time limits, refraining from using foul language and personal attacks. The next question before us is the adoption of the agenda. Motion is in order.
Mayor?
By councilmember Coombs.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Moved by councilmember Coombs, seconded by.
Mayor, second.
Seconded by councilmember Lawson to adopt the agenda. Discussion. I see no discussion, call for the question on the motion to adopt the agenda.
Mayor Kaufman?
Mayor votes yes.
Katie, I still don't have eScribe. I'm a yes.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt the agenda.
Next question before us is the adoption of the consent calendar on motions. I have numbers nine C one to nine C four. Motion is in order.
Mayor motion to approve item nine C one to nine C four.
It's who I, councilmember Jurenski, seconded by.
Bergen.
Councilmember Bergen to adopt the consent calendar on motions. I have number nine C one to nine C four. Discussion. I see no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of the consent calendar on motions, nine C one to nine C four.
Mayor Kaufman?
Mayor votes yes.
Councilmember Coombs?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt the consent calendar for motions.
The next question before us is the adoption of the consent calendar on resolutions and ordinances out of number ten A one to ten B three.
Mayor, motion to approve ten A one to ten B three.
Moved by councilmember Gardner, seconded by.
Bergen.
Councilmember Bergen to approve item number, to approve the consent calendar, item number, consent calendar on resolutions and ordinances, I have number ten A one to ten B three. Discussion. I see no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of the consent calendar on resolutions and ordinances, I have number ten A one to ten B three.
Councilmember Coombs?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt the consent calendar for resolutions and ordinances.
Now please read the title to item number twelve A.
Item twelve A is introduction of ordinance twenty twenty five sixty four, regulating the sale of non-scheduled psychoactive products posing substantial public safety risk and prohibiting the profiting from the illicit drug industry through sale of drug paraphernalia employment.
Councilmember Coombs?
Mayor, thank you. And if councilmember Gardner would like to add anything else, this really was brought forward in collaboration with Trevor Vaughn. It was noted that there were a number of places throughout our city that were selling substances that were known to cause serious health issues, but that have not been scheduled as controlled substances and also some of which are actually not approved by the FDA for consumption, but were being sold in a manner that was encouraging folks to consume them. So we just want to make sure that, you know, we don't have stores essentially taking advantage of loopholes in the laws to put forward into our community substances that are harmful to the people in our city. And I will, if councilmember Gardner has anything to add, I'll pass it off to councilmember Gardner or otherwise pass it on to Trevor.
No, I don't have anything to add. I think Trevor can take it from here.
Your presentation, my staff.
Thank you, Trevor Vaughn, manager of licensing. Yes, this ordinance consolidates gray market enforcement of psychoactive items, all of which are not FDA approved. It also adopts the state's regulation of kratom and age-restricted hemp products so that we can deal with enforcement all through one inspection. Also addressing drug paraphernalia implements as well, so kind of addressing those things that that have appeared in vape stores, liquor stores, and convenience stores that really aren't really aren't legal or safe for consumption. Thank you.
Motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Coombs.
Move to approve item twelve A.
Moved by councilmember Coombs, seconded by.
Gardner.
Councilmember Gardner to approve item number twelve A. Discussion. I see no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of item number twelve A.
I got a quick question, guys, sorry.
Oh, mayor.
Is it, so it, drug paraphernalia elements, does that include like a weed pipe or what does that include? No?
Well, weed, marijuana is legal. What we're looking at here is the rosina tubes, which are crack pipes, you know, and also oil burners, meth pipes. Those are probably the most common things that we see along with the tour boys that are used as a filter on those. There's, you know, if we see things like foil too, we're really looking for the waste of drug paraphernalia and not, not the stuff that's legitimate.
Good, thank you.
Further discussion. I see none, call for the question on the adoption of item number twelve A.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt item twelve A.
Now please read the title to item number twelve B.
Item twelve B is introduction of ordinance twenty twenty five sixty five, amending section six three oh one, six three oh two, six three oh three, six three oh four C and F, six three oh five, six three oh six, six three oh seven, six three oh eight A E G one, H two, K L one, L three, and N, six three oh nine A one, and A five, six three eleven B, six thirteen, six three twelve A, six three fourteen A, and F, six three sixteen B D, and H, six three seventeen, six three eighteen A, and B one, and six three nineteen at the city code pertaining to the licensing of regulated marijuana.
Brief presentation by staff.
Yeah, thank you. This is purely a technical ordinance to just clean up language in more alignment with changes that have been done to state codes, how we refer to items and removal of some obsolete provisions has no practical impact.
Motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Coombs.
Move to approve item twelve B.
Moved by councilmember Coombs, seconded by.
Sundberg.
Seconded by mayor for town Sundberg to approve item number twelve B. Discussion. I see no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of item number twelve B.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt item twelve B.
With the clerk now please read the title to item number twelve C.
Item twelve C is introduction of ordinance twenty twenty five sixty seven, authorizing the use of lease purchase financing to acquire certain equipment pursuant to the terms of an equipment lease purchase agreement by and between the Aurora Capital Leasing Corporation, as we sort, and the city of Aurora, Colorado, as we see, authorizing officials of the city to take all action necessary to carry out the transactions contemplated hereby and other related matters.
A brief presentation by staff.
Yes, good evening. Before you, is an ordinance allowing for lease purchase of heavy equipment vehicles, including dump trucks, freighters, loaders, backhoes, and various other vehicles necessary for city services and to be used by various city departments. The city has generally entered into these similar transactions on an annual basis. They allow for smoothing of costs over the anticipated life of the assets and also allows for locked-in pricing, unit pricing, therefore avoiding inflation. The parameters outlined in the ordinance include a maximum principal amount of eight million. It's likely that it will be closer to six point five million and a maximum interest rate of five point two five percent and a maximum term of eight years. We are asking that council approve the item so that we may move forward to the acquisition of these vehicles, which are critical to the delivery of essential services to its residents.
A motion is in order for the adoption of number twelve B. I'm sorry, twelve C.
Mayor, motion to approve twelve C.
Moved by councilwoman Bergen, seconded by.
Hancock.
Seconded by councilwoman Hancock. Discussion. I see no discussion, call for the question of item number twelve C.
Councilmember Hancock, thank you. The motion passes unanimously to adopt item twelve C.
But now please read the title. Would the clerk please read the title to item number twelve D?
Item twelve D is introduction of ordinance twenty twenty five seventy, amending section fifty thirty seven of the city code of the city of Aurora, Colorado, relating to municipal court surcharges and other related matters.
Brief presentation by staff.
Mayor, this is Jason Bachelor, city manager. So as we were reviewing city code, we found out that the city code references a annual update to the court surcharges, but the index that they tell us to use is no longer in effect. It references, it's, the index has been changed to, I think, the Aurora Denver Boulder one, and I think it used to be Aurora Denver, something else. And so we just want to update our code to make sure it's reflecting the index that's actually available.
All right, well, motion is in order.
Mayor motion to approve twelve D.
Moved by councilmember Gardner, seconded by.
Bergen. Coombs.
Seconded by councilwoman Bergen to approve item number twelve D. Discussion. I see no discussion, call for the question, call for the question on the adoption of item number twelve D.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt item twelve D.
Now please read the title to item number twelve E.
Item twelve E is introduction of ordinance twenty twenty five seventy one, adding section one thirty eight, one sixty one of the city code pertaining to large water volume service requests within Aurora's water service area boundary.
A motion is in order.
Sundberg.
Oh, we're jumping around anyway. Representation. I won't do a motion, but I'll say that this is in consideration of the fact that we live in an arid climate. We are conservationally minded. We have businesses that want to come to our city that may use too much water, moderate amounts of water, and it provides a matrix and a guide to what types of industry use what types of water amounts. Having this already, I'm told that certain businesses and industries looking at this have already decided to cut back and make their water usage more efficient through technology. But our assistant general manager of planning and engineering, Sarah Young, could say a lot more to this.
Okay, brief presentation by staff.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Council, Marshall Brown, general manager of Aurora Water, Sarah, I gave her the opportunity to let me fill in tonight for her. So as Mayor Protem Sundberg said, this is a guide that we put in place back in twenty twenty three to help businesses as they came to Aurora understand expectations for water use. It allows uses up to three thousand gallons per acre per day. But if all of that is consumable, it has to be less than that. So it takes into consideration the volume of water returned to our system so it can be recaptured and reused. And again, sets expectations for large businesses, large water consumers, in the interest of ensuring that we can provide a resilient, sustainable water supply for our service area well into the future. So with that, the request tonight is to take what we created in two thousand twenty three and put it into code, which will make it even more clear to customers and businesses as they come to Aurora what the expectations are.
And I'm sorry, got us out of water. Out of water, out of order. Motion is in order, I believe. Mayor Protem, did you, you want to move?
Oh, yes. I'd be glad to make a motion to approve twelve E.
Okay, been moved by Mayor Protem, who was also the chair of our water policy committee and.
Formally, formally.
Formally, oh, I'm sorry, who is now?
Councilwoman Coombs.
Councilmember Coombs, okay. And okay, so, well, moved by Mayor Protem and seconded by.
Hancock.
Hancock, okay. Hancock, councilmember Hancock, okay. Discussion. I see no, I'm sorry, who's?
Bergen.
Councilmember Bergen.
No, I'm just happy to see this put into code. I think it's important for developers to know that it's not just something that we did in twenty twenty three, but that, that it's actually codified and, and they'll basically know the rules moving forward.
Right. Further discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Coombs.
I just wanted to say I wholeheartedly support this and I'll have some additional notes from our most recent water policy committee meeting during my report to kind of help reinforce the importance of really putting this into policy and not just kind of as a informational item for developers.
Further discussion? I see none, call for the question on the adoption of item number twelve E.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt item twelve E.
Now please read the title to item number thirteen A.
Item thirteen A is finalizing of ordinance twenty twenty five fifty seven, submitting to a vote of the registered electors of the city of Aurora, Colorado, at the regular municipal election of November fourth, twenty twenty five, that proposed amendment to article three three of the city charter concerning elective public office.
Brief presentation, my staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Pete Shulte, city attorney. So this is the third reading of this particular ordinance because we had a discrepancy between three dash, section three dash three, three dash seven. So this is just the second reading on making the change. So if three dash three passes, it removes the automatic resignation portion, attains another elected office, that was another provision. So it just cleans that up from the original version. Jason, understand that?
Okay. Motion is in order. For the adoption of item number thirteen A.
Mayor? Motion.
Is it, I'm sorry, could people put their, oh, I'm trying to hand up, it would make it easier for me.
I think it's Casson.
It's Casson, councilmember Casson.
He made the motion, mayor, we just need a second now.
Councilmember Casson made the motion, okay. It's been moved by councilmember Casson, seconded by.
Hancock.
Seconded by councilmember Hancock to approve item number thirteen A. Discussion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Coombs.
I'll just say in an additional reading on the record again, that I think that there are significant potential conflicts that I don't think would necessarily be resolvable by council members holding other offices that would allow them to do both jobs, this office and another office, that have been really clearly highlighted by the number of lawsuits that we have initiated against other bodies and against the state of Colorado. So I just, I'm very concerned, not about people's willingness to negotiate potential conflicts, but about the ability to negotiate those potential conflicts while faithfully carrying out the duties of both offices. So I do not support.
Further discussion? I see none, call for the question on the adoption of item number thirteen A.
The motion passes with eight yes votes, two no votes from councilmember Coombs and councilmember Medina.
With the clerk now please read the title to item number thirteen B.
Item thirteen B is finalizing of ordinance twenty twenty five sixty two, amending section one thirty four two of the city code pertaining to local amendments to the twenty twenty four model traffic code.
A brief presentation by staff.
Good evening, mayor and council. Commander Matt Brookbacher, we're Police Department Special Operations Bureau. This is a, an amendment to section one thirty four dash two of the city code pertaining to our local amendments of twenty twenty four model traffic code. This is specifically, I'm sorry, specifically bringing section fourteen thirteen of the model traffic code. into compliance with the Colorado revised statutes as it pertains to alluding. The biggest change in this section is taking out the necessity for a marked police vehicle and adding in the ability for unmarked police vehicles that are properly equipped with emergency lights and sirens, making them readily identifiable as police vehicles.
Motion is in order.
Mayor, I move to approve thirteen B.
Moved by Mayor Protam. Sundberg, seconded by.
Cherensky.
Second by Councilmember George to approve item number thirteen B, discussion? Seeing none, call for the question on the adoption of item number thirteen B.
Councilmember, thank you. The motion passes unanimously. I'm sorry, it is not, it passes with nine yes votes, one no vote from Councilmember Coombs.
With the click now, please read the title to item number fourteen A.
Item fourteen A is public hearing and consideration of resolution twenty twenty five seventy nine, making certain findings of fact regarding the proposed annexation of a parcel of land located in the southeast quarter and east half of the southwest quarter of the section ten, township three south, range sixty five west of the sixth principal meridian county of Adam, state of Colorado, Sandy Point Annexation, two hundred forty two, one fifty four acres.
Public hearing is now open, presentation by staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Justin Andrews. I'm a project manager with the Office of Development Assistance. A petition for annexation was filed with the city clerk for annexation of a two hundred forty two acre parcel owned by Cowley Management LLC. This parcel is located in the northwest corner of East Fifty Sixth Avenue and the North Hayes Mount Road. There is a vicinity map near our council packet. City Council made a finding of substantial compliance regarding this annexation on June ninth of this year. The annexation processes follow state law and annexations are considered over three city council meetings. Tonight's agenda, the second meeting in that process in which city council conducts the public hearing, considers approval of a resolution making a finding that the land is eligible for annexation and considers introduction of the annexation ordinance. There's no presentation from the applicants, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Katie, does anybody wish to be heard on this?
No.
Very well, questions of staff? Well, no, there's no applicant here, so staff will, I guess, answer questions for the applicant if I understand that correctly. Other questions? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed, and a motion is in order.
Mayor, I move to approve fourteen A.
Moved by Mayor Protam Sundberg, seconded by.
Mayor, second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson, to approve item number fourteen A, discussion? Seeing no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of item number fourteen A.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt item fourteen A.
Right now, please read the title to item number fourteen B.
Item fourteen B is ordinance twenty twenty five eighty two, annexing a parcel of land located in the southeast quarter and the east half of the southwest quarter of section ten, township three south, range sixty five west of the sixth principal meridian county of Adam, state of Colorado, Sandy Point Annexation, two hundred forty two, one fifty four acres.
Representation, my staff. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, this is not a public hearing, so representation, my staff.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In conjunction with the presentation given for fourteen A, this item is the initial reading of that annexation ordinance, annexing the two hundred forty two acre parcel at the northwest corner of East Fifty Sixth Avenue and North Hayes Mount Road. There's no separate presentation by the applicants. Happy to answer any questions.
See, a motion is in order.
Questions.
And then I go to questions. Because it's not a public hearing. Motion is in order.
I thought it was a public hearing.
It is not.
Mayor, I move to approve fourteen B.
Moved by Mayor Protam Sundberg, seconded by.
Consent.
Seconded by Councilmember Kasal to approve item number fourteen B. Discussion.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask staff if they know anything about the type of use that this would be. I believe it's going to be industrial, but would water have been consulted or would it just, would it just have to follow the large user, large water user ordinance that we just passed in code?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Councilmember Bergen. That's accurate. So this annexation was vetted with Aurora Water for utility service considerations prior to the petition acceptance that happened about two months ago. This falls within airport, commercial, light industrial zoning per the comprehensive plan and will be required to meet all pertinent regulations, including that large water user standard.
Great, thank you very much.
Further discussion? I say done, call for the question on the adoption of item number fourteen B.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt item fourteen B.
With click now, please read the title to item number sixteen A.
Item sixteen A is discussion and possible action regarding future in-person or virtual council meetings and changes to council roles. And Mayor, we have four individuals who would like to speak.
Very well. Please proceed.
Auntie, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. You know, I'm hopeful that this council and the mayor will reinstate public comment and future meetings and will reinstate the in-person public, or in-person meetings that were once being held. I am hoping that the days of us behind these screens, the virtual screens, will come to an end so that we can be able to have meaningful and thoughtful dialogue, both, not just for the matters that I have previously spoken on, but for the matters that are before this city that other individuals do want to be able to approach council in an in-person format. I've been able to speak to some folks whom are taxpayers in Aurora. I have family members who are in Aurora, and there are some folks that would love to talk to you all about HOA issues. There are folks that would love to talk to you about potholes. There's folks that would love to talk to you about issues in their neighborhoods, but are unable to do so in a in-person fashion. And so it's my hope that you all are able to reinstate those meetings in person as you move forward in the future so that those individuals do feel empowered to approach you all, to be able to engage with their public elected officials, and for those who are trying to have conversations about matters that impact the city of Aurora. I know that we've been on this game of hide and go seek, but y'all have been caught. We know who the bad guy is at times, and I hope that we're just able just to grow up and to have these in-person meetings again, because running and hiding behind the screen is not going to do anything aside from just igniting more of us to continue to talk, or talk on agenda items or other things that are at the city council meeting. Because folks do have an opinion on what's happening in the city of Aurora, because all of our tax dollars are funding all of what's happening across the state. And so hopefully that we're able to move forward with reinstatement of public meetings, and I'm sure that this will be an opportunity, or excuse me, in-person meetings, and I'm sure that there's folks that disagree, but we would love to make sure that we re-enfranchise the constituents that you do end up serving.
Thank you. Next is Nidian. Nidian, go ahead. You have three minutes.
We watch you, we have watched you, and we have heard you debate topics like water, potholes, digital billboards, and your version of corporate interests. And it is only through, it is clear that it is only through public invited to be heard that you all will actually get a glimpse of what is happening on your watch without your knowledge. When you have families coming to you grieving their loss because of a police encounter, that happens under your watch, but you're not watching. So the public comes to you to express their grievance. That is not a problem. That should be a priority. And it should come with gratitude because you have a public that is engaging with you to let you know exactly what it is that is happening and what their needs are. Yet instead of leaning in because it's a hard truth, we watched you on June ninth violate the First Amendment rights of everyone in community. And when you did that, you did it under the intention to vote on this indefinitely so that you didn't have to have a sixteen A on your agenda over and over. Yet here we are at sixteen A. So what that clearly means is that we can't even trust you to set something in motion that would last more than a month. That is why I am adamant that a judge actually decide to tell you all to stop it and to listen to your constituency with actual engagement. Your public listening session is not a feasible alternative because we know what it means when there's something that is not a part of your official meeting. That gives you a pass to walk away. That gives you a pass to not attend. So we are watching intentionally, and we know that unfortunately, your leadership, the majority of you, is not designed to support and protect the voices of the individuals that you should be honored to serve. So it is my recommendation that you stop running from the preliminary injunction hearing and let's go to court. Because that's what you all said you wanted to do anyway.
Your time is up. Aaron, you're next. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. So there we are again, speaking about sixteen A, and as I was driving home, it hit me that before my grandmother was elected, I, as a young person, was earning merit badges as, as a Boy Scout and taking away the Boy Scouts' right to earn their merit badge in government and politics, or Girl Scouts to earn the same thing, that's just wrong. I enjoyed going to city council meetings, watching as the animal shelter was promoted, the animal shelter that is desperately needing funds. I get that people are upset and distracted by the, by the protests that have happened, but the protests that happened due to decorum not being followed, not just by the protesters, but by those on city council. It is our right as your constituents to redress our, our public officials. You guys have suspended Roberts Rules and Borders for long enough. I think it's time that we find a bridge so we can actually meet in person again, whether or not that's getting a parliamentarian to actually get the council meetings in order when, when the Honorable Mayor cannot get them in order, or we find some other route, because there are tons of citizens that want their voices heard. We don't always have to agree with each other. We just want to be heard. And being heard means being seen not on a virtual screen, but in, in public. The Honorable Steve Hogan, who the chambers are named after, is rolling in his grave right now. Let's honor his memory and reinstate, reinstate in public meetings and stop these virtual meetings. And that's all I have to say.
Tanya, you're next. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Again, I know I touched base earlier on my thoughts, but I do miss the in-person meeting, the in-person public to be heard and being able to speak at the podium with what my thoughts are instead of just being via virtual. However, keeping that in mind, as other individuals said, the decorum needs to be followed both by community and as well the people in the dais, council. With that being in mind, I know that I've read several different places that we are fortunate enough to be able to have a public to be heard in live and virtually, and that it is up to city council to decide if we have that either publicly or virtually. And I just wanted to give notice on that, and also regarding the First Amendment rights. Those are usually violated if, like disruption, and there's other means to it, that the First Amendment rights aren't followed. So there's more to the First Amendment right procedure process, which I'm pretty sure the Mr. Shulte and whatnot would have the information to make sure that's followed for the city. So I just wanted to give my two cents, my opinion on that, and also adhere, listen to, and appreciate what others have spoken, especially Honorable Auntie Anderson, what he said. He had good points and good thoughts and stuff, and I hope that we do bring back the in-person, live council meeting, because I do miss coming in person and speaking to you guys live. And, because right now, I don't get to see anyone. So I appreciate and I hope that we can have it back so people can go. And, and if anyone's listening, please let council know that you want it back in person, because it's very important. Thank you.
That was the last speaker.
Presentation by staff.
Mayor Pete Shulte, City Attorney, this would be the time, if any council member wants to raise a change to the meeting structure or any of the rules for the next meeting on the eleventh of August.
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
I'd like to move to resume in-person council meetings on August eleventh.
Moved by Councilwoman Coombs, seconded by.
Medina.
Seconded by Councilmember Medina to start in-person, resume in-person meetings on August eleventh. Discussion.
Mayor, yeah, just to elucidate kind of the purpose here, right? We have seen folks coming, staying within their time limits in our recent meetings, abiding by the decorum rules, at least from members of the public, once we agreed to reinstate the public comment listening session. And so I think that it would be appropriate to give folks a chance to continue that in person, and I know that many folks on this body have agreed and indicated over time that they believe in-person meetings are more effective and that it is appropriate for members of this body to conduct our meetings in person. And so in light of kind of those positions, which I agree with, I just, I believe that we should return to in-person meetings.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Coombs. I'm sorry, who's, I would second by Councilmember Medina. Further discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Hancock, yes.
And I, I do agree with my colleague, in-person meetings are effective and they're, and I, I, I enjoy meeting the public, but I also want to point out that any time a person wants to speak to us in our constituency, no matter where they reside in this city, they have the opportunity to email, call, write. I've been to HOA meetings with concerned constituents on particular issues. So it's not that we're outreach for people, for the constituents that we work for. We're very aware who we work for. It is important, however, that when we come into the council chambers, that people, whether they have a viewpoint that's counter to us, whether they disagree with us vehemently, they need to be reminded of the respect that is due to the office. Whether they like us or not is immaterial. The fact of the matter is, is the office of. The fact of the matter is, is the office of, uh, the city council and the work that we do for the constituents of this city is important and we want to get our business done. Also, you know, reminding people that the fact that we do have public invited to be heard is not a statutory right. It's not written into our into our code. Um, it is a courtesy. And the fact that people have been behaving these past couple of weeks has been really good, but we also have the disconnect button too. So there's that. Um, we want to make sure that when people come to the chambers, when they step into the well, that they follow the rules and that they treat us with the same respect that we try to treat them with. If if they disagree with us and we disagree with them, that's perfectly fine. We're, this is a free country. We can do that. But we just want to, I I don't like this back and forth stuff, you know? I I want us to make a decision and and do this thing. I I enjoy the work that we do. I enjoy the work that I do and the people that I serve. But I want to make sure that that people, particularly those who have analysts against this council right now, that they work within those parameters.
Further discussion?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Bergen.
Yeah, I just also want to reiterate, um, the fact that, um, our constituents that, um, reside in the city of Aurora um, are able to contact us, um, at at by email, by phone. Um, I am open to questions at my town halls. So, um, I have, um, a lot of constituents that do come to the town halls and, um, are able to, you know, to ask their questions a at that point. Um, and I certainly, um, you know, try to respond to their their emails and their phone calls as well. So we do have opportunities to listen to our constituents. So I just wanted to make that that point. And, um, regarding this motion, um, I will be voting no. Um, I think, um, to today, we did see, um, that that everyone got an opportunity to speak. No one was cut off before their time. So I think it was handled very well. Um, so we'll just have to see, um, going forward.
Further discussion? Uh, seeing no further discussion, uh, call for the question on the adoption of the Coombs, uh, motion uh, to go back into in-person, uh, meetings effective on the eleventh of August.
Mayor Kaufman?
Uh, Mayor votes yes.
Councilmember Coombs?
Sorry, I was having an escribe issue. I mean, yes.
Okay. The motion does not pass with five no votes and six yes, I'm sorry, five yes votes, six no votes from Councilmember Bergen, Gardner, Jirinsky, Kasah, Lawson, and Sundberg.
Uh, um, Mayor has no report. Um, Councilmember Coombs reports.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Um, so just a few items in my report. Uh, Dr. Cog met on, that's the Denver Regional Council of Governments, met on July sixteenth. Um, and just wanted to highlight from that meeting that the award ceremony for Dr. Cog will be held on August twenty seventh at seven P M. in the school ballroom and you can get tickets on the website for Dr. Cog. I know that also overlaps our, uh, water policy or our water tour. Um, so it may be difficult for council members and some staff to attend. Um, but for folks who are here, um, you can also check in with, uh, city management if you intend to attend and need a ticket. Um, for Water Policy Committee, um, we had some significant discussions about the city's long-term ability to provide for our water supply. Um, in covering the entire planning area boundary of the city. So all of the currently annexed portions of the city, um, we can cover the water needs for. But in looking at that planning area boundary, which is other areas that we may contemplate annexing for development purposes, there are some real questions about our ability to provide water um, to those areas as well as to provide water for extraterritorial agreements. That's, um, for areas outside of our city, which are requested of us on a regular basis. Um, and so I think we're going to see, I applaud the policy brought forward today um, by Mayor Protem Sundberg, and I think we're going to have to, well, I know based on that conversation that we're going to have to have additional long-term discussions on how we meet our water needs, um, and what development can meaningfully look like in the city based on those needs. Um, I did also want to, you know, address the issue of pedestrian safety. I know we saw the tragic death of a twelve-year-old boy, um, as a result of, uh, being hit by a distracted driver. Um, and it really highlights a major problem that we have in our city and in our state. But our city is in one of the worst states in our state. So in the state overall, um, pedestrians accounted for nineteen percent of all traffic fatalities. But Aurora had among the highest number of traffic fatalities in that study, which was looking at twenty twenty-three, the year for which mo- the most recent data was available. Um, and we saw an increase from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-three of two hundred and seventy-five percent in pedestrian fatalities in traffic accidents. Um, and so in light of that, we did, um, already were nearly wrapped up with the Connecting Aurora Plan. Um, and one feature of that plan is really looking at ways that we can make improvements to address pedestrian safety. Um, and so I hope we really look at those opportunities and those plan in that plan and also address investments in public safety throughout our city. Um, specifically in the area of traffic safety and pedestrian safety. Um, because I think we all see and hear about and hear from our constituents about those, that really serious issue of pedestrian fatalities. Um, that is very important throughout our city. So, um, you know, we want to acknowledge, um, that that's highlighted by this tragedy, but also recognize that this is a persistent issue. And that's my report.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Gardner.
No report.
Councilmember Jirinsky.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to actually just kind of pick up where Councilmember Coombs left off. Um, I helped hold a memorial for Riley Ashby, the twelve-year-old, um, that was killed by a distracted driver. And, uh, you know, Wheel Wheel Park is a place that attracts one of our most vulnerable populations, which is children. And, um, I do think, you know, that we need to acknowledge that this is a a continuous problem and we do need to invest in public safety. Um, it was incredible to see the community show up the way that they did. Uh, the Yale Elementary Community showed up, the Columbia Middle School Community showed up. Um, I I mean, hundreds of people showed up and it was, it was really incredible. And, um, you know, one thing that was talked about and that the family is specifically asking for is instead of another, um, you know, in memory blue sign over in that area because there's already several. Um, one thing that they did talk about is potentially a pedestrian bridge. Um, and I and I do think that we have to invest in public safety, especially of one of our most vulnerable populations and accept that this is a continuing, uh, problem, uh, pedestrian safety. I attended the Shop with a Cop event. That was very, very cool to see every kid that showed up. Um, got two hundred and twenty-five dollars, all provided by donors and the, um, Aurora Police Association, they all got school supplies, um, new shoes, new clothes. That was very, very cool. Uh, I attended the Boots Not Suits, uh, event, the, um, opening night kickoff to the Arapahoe County Fair. It was a great turnout that night. I hope the whole weekend was. Uh, I receive, I've received several emails from constituents in the Highlands Hollow Hollows Park area about that park just not being cleaned up. Um, it seems like maybe city staff sometimes is is getting overwhelmed, um, and and maybe getting a little behind. So I have organized a cleanup event. We can't always sit around and just wait for the government to come clean stuff up. So, uh, there is an organized cleanup event on August sixteenth at Highlands Hollow Park. Um, from eight to eleven A M., the city will be providing gloves, uh, safety vests, trash grabbers, and trash bags. Um, so please come out and and let's start cleaning up the city, um, ourselves. That's fourteen hundred South Yeravan Street. Vehicle auto auctions that go on in the city with all of the impounds um, are now being made public, which is something that I really pushed hard for. Um, so if you are, uh, in the market for a used vehicle, we are, we are auctioning tons of them. Um, go to auroragov.org backslash impound and you have an opportunity to attend our auto auctions. The next one is on August sixth. Um, and I assure you, you can get some really good deals and not all of these vehicles, um, you know, are are trashed vehicles. There are some very good vehicles and brokers have been coming in swooping up these vehicles. And and I believe it's very important that the people of Aurora get an opportunity to have some of these vehicles. I just quickly want to address, uh, the recall effort against DA Amy Patton. Uh, currently she has until Wednesday to issue her, uh, rebuttal statement and then, uh, it will go to the printer, um, for the packets. I thank you to everybody who has reached out, um, who has donated, who is continuing to donate, who is, uh, volunteering and 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 planning events. Uh, I I I am doing this in honor and in memory of of Caitlin Weaver, twenty-four-year-old Aurora resident. Uh, her death will not be in vain and I have promised her father, uh, that that justice will be served. So with that, you can expect, uh, petition packets probably by the end of this week. Um, and then we will get this done. I thank everybody for the outpouring of support and money.
Uh, Councilmember Kasah.
Uh, none on me.
Uh, Councilmember Rio.
Okay, no report.
Uh, Councilmember Sundberg, Mayor Bridham Sundberg.
Well, thank you, sir. I also attended Shop with a Cop, always a positive event, watching cops stroll through the aisles with a young person filling a cart with some stuff they really need for school. I attended a groundbreaking for Aurora Housing Authority Sanctuary on Potomac. It's a forty-three unit bed space dedicated solely to to folks with mental health challenges. A very supportive environment that'll work very closely in conjunction with the uh, walk-in detox, walk-in psychiatric care. That's going to be, uh, just a few feet away, actually. Let's see, I also attended the vigil for for Riley. And you could tell the city, uh, was hurting across many parts of our city because of that. Really, really hit home with a lot of families and teachers at that school, uh, first responders, et cetera. Great turnout, amazing, all people, all kinds of backgrounds. Uh, Councilwoman Jirinsky did a fantastic job organizing. He loved, um, muscle cars. So Councilwoman Jirinsky, uh, organized a procession of great, um, muscle cars and hot rods going going past there. Let's see, another event that brought people together in our community was the seven twenty memorial. Uh, Heather Dearman does an excellent job of, uh, taking that by the horns and then really bringing a lot of people together to make it happen. And I was honored to supply one hundred lunches to the volunteers. And, uh, just like one more example of our city coming together when we've been hurt and, uh, tragic things have happened. We we have a tendency to come together. So God bless Aurora.
Councilmember Medina?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Yes, I did attend the, uh, seven twenty memorial as well to run on Saturday. I actually ran in that as well as, uh, most of my family and grandchildren. So we, uh, planned that specifically and my daughter-in-law also is working with Heather Dearman, uh, with that to get more people. They actually raised thirteen thousand dollars, which was more than they've ever raised before. So that was great to hear that the race is growing in size and support for that. So again, that's my report. Thank you.
Councilmember Hancock.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I had the opportunity to speak at Sapling Grove Apartments, uh, last week at their grand opening. Even though they have been open for a while, they had their grand ribbon cutting last week. And this is an apartment community with one, two, and three-bedroom apartment homes in my ward that gives, uh, low-income families the opportunity to have staple housing, but it's also, um, housing that is meant to be aspirational. So that they be in this apartment while they can save money because there's financial, um, opportunities for them to learn how to to manage their finances so that eventually they can move out of this community and move into a home. Low-income housing is not meant to be a lifestyle. It's meant to be a springboard. And I like the opportunity that this community provides so that, um, these folks who need access to this much-needed housing have the opportunity to move forward. I also attended, um, at La- at Buckley Space Force Base, the retirement of Chief Master Sergeant. Um, I I mis- I mispronounced her name and I'm I'm sorry. Um, she retires, um, after twenty-two years of excellent service. She even got a commendation from the, uh, Chief Master Sergeant of the Air Force, um, Shauna Rhimes. It was, it was just, uh, it was an amazing ceremony. Over five hundred people came out to celebrate this Chief Master Sergeant's retirement, which was really great. Um, also on the, if you'll notice on the corner of Potomac and Mississippi, the Aurora Mental Health Facility is now really got bones on it. I took a hard hat tour and we're seeing the, um, really the manifestation of all the hard work that Aurora Mental Health is doing. Um, and and it's expected to open towards the end of this year, which we're very excited about that. Um, back a few months ago, um, the, uh, Chair of the National Transportation and Safety Board, Alvin Brown, came to Aurora to do a transportation summit. And one of the things he talked about was car pedestrian fatalities and dangers of cars, pedestrians, and people on the roads. And one of the things that we're going to be working on, uh, as Chair of the Transportation Committee is how we can incorporate some of the policies that the National Transportation Safety Board wants to implement to keep people safe on our roads and pedestrians and cars, um, distracted distracted driving has been one of the the major, um, impacts on people, you know, folks on their cell phones multitasking. And when you're driving a five-thousand-pound bomb, that's really not not the time to do that. So we're trying to work on some, uh, safety implementation measures so that people could safely operate vehicles on the road. Um, also today, uh, Councilmember Sundberg and I have the opportunity to see a young man graduate from the wellness court. Um, it is so amazing to see people who find themselves in situations, um, where they get to have a reset. Um, this young man was really inspirational today. He was forty-two weeks sober, which equates to a year and a half of sobriety. And, you know, it's going to be a day-by-day walk for him for the rest of his life, but he is on a good path. He's got a job. He's got an apartment. He's working with one of the major agencies in this city, uh, ready to work. Um, and it it was just, uh, uh, just inspirational to see this young man, um, set off on his course to a brand-new life. And so we applaud him and, uh, that is concludes my report. Thank you so much.
Uh, Councilmember Bergen. I mean, sorry, Councilmember Lawson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first, I want to give my prayers and thoughts to Riley and his family. And thank you to Councilmember Jirinsky for all she's done in helping that family and and doing all that she's bring to bring the community together together. Um, pedestrian, I mean, we talked about this a lot throughout our tenure. I know about what we need to do and putting some certain type of safety measures. Um, and in this particular spot, I really hope that there's something that the city will do. But I also too want to give my hearts and prayers to another family who lost two people in a crash that was on Airport in Peoria. Um, this, you know, that was a person that was going a hundred and twenty miles an hour and crashed into this person and killed two people. A family, they're devastated. So we not only need to look at pedestrian, but the speeding and all of this stuff, it's a cautionary tale. Is it really worth it? You have these cars and you're doing all this, going down, street racing, being distracted. But the cautionary tale is that you've killed two people and you've taken people's parents, their their mothers, their fathers, their children. And I really think we really need to look at this, the street racing, um, all this speeding. I know that we've done a lot of different things, but we also this speeding. I know that we've done a lot of different things, but we also, I also want to put my prayers for that family as well. Um, I'm going to go to my legislative update. Um, so the Senate continues to mark up the FY26 appropriations package until the end of the week. When the Senate's August resets begins, the House left the DC last week and everybody will return September 2nd to pass a budget before to avoid a government shutdown. President Trump released an executive order last week opening up funding to alternative housing, methio- methodologies to help unhoused populations. Um, I will be having my town hall on August 5th at Mission Viejo. We will be talking about everything planning in Ward 5 and then within the city. And Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Bergen?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, uh, again, busy couple of weeks. Had the Water Policy Committee. Um, I had a, uh, meeting with staff on our Unified Development Ordinance, uh, some of the changes that are, uh, forthcoming. Um, I had my Ward 6 Town Hall and we had presentations, um, on wildfires as well as a presentation by Marshall Brown on water and just sustaining us into the future. A lot of good questions came out of that. Um, and then I always do my, my general updates, um, and then open it up for question and answer. Um, had a budget briefing with staff where we talked about, um, how we're going to address our $20 million, um, deficit for 2026. I also had a tour of the Prairie Point Development, which is previously the Kings Point North Development, um, in a Polaris, which is like a four-wheel, whatever, off-road vehicle that, um, scared me to death. Um, but almost, yeah, there was a row bar. So thank God I got to hold on to that. Um, but, uh, almost a thousand acres, about 900-something acres of land, um, a lot of open space, but they, that, this is the development that will have the PGA golf course, um, um, in it. And then, um, attended the Fitzsimmons Redevelopment Authority Board Meeting and, um, also, uh, just had our E470 roadway committee. I chair that committee. And then, uh, for fun, attended the Boots Not Suits at Arapahoe County, uh, Fairgrounds. Um, that was real fun. And I just want to make a point on, again, on, uh, safety, uh, on our roads. Um, I don't know what has happened in the last four, five, six years in Colorado, but people are running red lights, people are speeding, excessive speeding, uh, doing, you know, the, the car racing, um, distracted driving. I mean, so many different factors and, uh, elements of, of not paying attention while driving and not, not following the rules of the road. And, um, there's rules of the road for a reason. And, you know, as stated previously by a couple of council members, um, you know, it's, you are putting other, your life and others' lives in danger when you are not paying attention on the road and you are not, uh, following the speed limit or you are not stopping at a, at a signalized red light. Um, and I see it all the time. I see people going through red lights. I know we did away, uh, years ago, it was a voter, it went to the voters, um, on a ballot measure to, um, whether to keep the photo red light cameras or do away with them. The voters, um, wanted to get rid of them. And I, I don't know if this is true, but I feel like as soon as that, those red light cameras went away, people just thought, uh, it doesn't matter. Um, I'll just run the red light and, and risk my life and others. So I, I plead, uh, plead with people to please just remember when you are driving that you're, you're, you're responsible for, um, making su- making sure that you're being a safe driver so that you don't harm someone. I mean, God forbid you have to live with the fact that you possibly could have killed somebody. I mean, I, that's the most horrific thing I can think of. So thank you.
Well, thanks, everybody.
Mayor, Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor. Please forgive me. I just want to make one small correction. Um, I totally butchered the Chief Master Sergeant's name. And so for the record, I just want to make sure that I say it right. Chief Master Sergeant Sharma Haynes, H-A-Y-N-E-S. She served 22 years with honor and distinction and she retires from the Buckley Space Force Base. And I just want to give a big shout out of congratulations to her because she truly is an American hero. And I want to make sure that I said her name right. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Um, I just, um, I want to say that, uh, I don't utilize the time, uh, to, uh, talk about my different events or, you know, things that I'm doing, but I try and post it on Facebook and I post on a daily basis. And I would encourage people to look at that Facebook page by going to, uh, Mike Kaufman at Facebook, um, and, uh, or it's Mike Kaufman Facebook. It'd come up.
And you can see, you can see the mayor in the pool.
In the pool, yeah. Yeah, I had a second set of clothes that I brought with me. Uh, but I thank, uh, thank everybody, uh, for, uh, participating tonight. And with that, saying no for the before, excuse me, the Aurora City Council meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
I know.